August 8, 2014, Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chamber tonight. Also welcome those who are watching us on Channel 10, those who might be listening to us on their computers, those who might be watching us on the computers, those who might be listening to us on their radios. This is your city government. We want you to get involved in any way possible that works for you. So, thank you for being here, for watching, for listening. Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to take the roll call of the council members.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Pack.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Hanske.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to stand and have the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, led by council member Fitzgerald tonight.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Okay, next item on the agenda are citizen's statements to the council. This is a time when citizens have an opportunity, come up to the microphone which is open, and maybe comment on something that's a positive in the city, or comment on something that is a concern of theirs happening within the city. A number of things, if you come up, I ask that you give us your name, your address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak directly to the council. No election hearing is to go on, and this is not the time to discuss other things on the agenda tonight. So, look, get ready to get up.
Good evening. Lori Palmieri, 12 West Parkway Avenue. I want to thank the council, especially Deb Osby, Steve Cummings, and Steve Herman for digging into a sensitive issue. I come to you tonight with both a thanks and also a request, and this relates to the workshop that you did recently on the sex offender residency issue and the upcoming workshop in September. So, again, thank you for digging into something that's not easy to dig into, and I just know that this is not comfortable for a lot of people to discuss, but those things have to be discussed. So, I'm very, very grateful. Our neighborhood is very grateful. We ask that you please consider the issue very carefully and with facts and not myths or canned presentations. We have had the DOC information approval presentation which you had during your workshop, actually twice. We had requested they come to our neighborhood, and it was very helpful to have that information to get neighbors informed on these issues. We also, a year ago, met with Steve Cummings and a number of other representatives as well as neighbors, and we went into this a little more in depth. In March, I sent a memo to council members giving a little more of the issue relative, not so much to the safety issue, because we agree with Department of Corrections on the fact that if you know where they live, you know you're safer. We were presenting them more with a possible way of approaching this in dealing with the property values and how that impacts. And I believe in that memo that I sent you, and I'd be happy to send this again, two studies that came out recently, 2011, 2013. I also would ask that the costs he looked at to the property owner and the city based on things such as decreased tax assessments. One of the properties that we brought up had over $20,000 assessment, decreased assessment, and that one is one of the cluster areas that we're looking at. So, I just ask that as we move into that September workshop, rather than replay the full presentation, also allow for some kind of analysis to be done prior to that that deals with facts such as the actual sale prices of homes overlaid with the residency of the sex offenders that are in the area that we're looking at. So, I also want to talk about how perception is reality for potential homeowners, and as we're trying to work on our neighborhood so hard to bring it up, that can be a weighty factor bringing things down. So, I just, you know, I think that it would be helpful to have perhaps more of this data analysis or market analysis, if you will, on those actual sales and the number of days that homes sat on the market in that proximity. As of today, there are 92 sex offenders living within one mile of my address. Sales are approximately, just from a glance at the assessor's website, somewhere in the 10% to 15% range down, okay? So, I just want to ask again, please don't allow the distraction of the fear-based safety issue to cloud the issue. We are very grateful for our law enforcement and our public safety people and the strategies that they need to do, but we also can't get sidetracked and forget about protecting property value. I believe that we can come to a way to handle, I guess, the needs of both if we work together, and I really, really want to thank you again for providing us that opportunity in September. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward at this point in time?
My name is Patricia Deener. I live at 1360 Broad. I come to you this evening in regard to things that are going on. I know the officers have been really busy with Country USA and Sodas Days and everything. You know, when you make a phone call to call the police in regard to illegal fireworks, they don't enforce it, and then at the end, I am a victim of, how do you say it? Slander. It's got to stop. I'm tired of it, and they go by. I didn't see him stop to talk to any of them. We're concerned. We have people that are doing it, but these illegal fireworks don't even have to happen on 4th of July. It's been happening, and it's going into other people's property, and they won't wait till somebody has a fire out of it, and it needs to stop.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward at this point?
Hello. My name is Carrie Halsey. I live at 1325 Bowen Street.
Can I hear you? Can you speak, woman?
Yes.
I just speak into the microphone.
All right. Thank you. My name is Carrie Ann Halsey. I live at 1325 Bowen Street, and at the time, or at this time, they are doing work on our street. My issue is with the assessment. We're really grateful for all the work that's being done for the infrastructure of Oshkosh and bettering our community as a whole, but the problem is the assessment is, it's a lot of money for us. A lot of people in my neighborhood are on fixed incomes, and at this point in time, my assessment is about half of my annual income. And I was just wondering if there is a way that we can approach this in a different manner, such as maybe getting the concrete or even the 6% interest rate erased, because it's just a lot of money for a lot of us right now, and something has to be done. I guess that's about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Rich Schneider. I live at 1418 Bowen. I'd like to talk about the Bowen Street construction project. I don't feel like the city has been completely honest with us about why they are doing it to begin with. Mr. Paddock has pointed out last meeting that about the concrete, the age of the concrete pavement, the age of the utilities, but yet there's other streets in Oshkosh which are much older and in much worse shape. One example is North Main Street from New York to Murdoch. It's a lot, probably a lot older than what Bowen is and a lot more terrible shape. I don't know why they weren't targeted, but I know why we were, and I believe it's because of the big interceptor that they put through. They wanted to get that through in a hurry, and the way to do it was to just to rip everything out and to start from scratch, which makes a lot of sense, but we're shouldering the bill for it. That big interceptor has nothing to do with our homes, but yet we're paying the majority of the cost for this. I know he said the city is paying for part of this project, but you can't tell me if they would have just kept, how long you think that street would have been there if it wouldn't have been for that interceptor. That's the reason why it's being torn up and gone through, and now we've got to pay for all new sidewalks and everything so that we're up the code with the Disabilities Act, which I understand, but what, are we going to be the only six or eight blocks in town that's going with a disability act? We got to replace everything? I don't, I don't feel it's fair that we're shouldering the price for all this. I think we should have something, either the sidewalks or, I don't mind, I don't mind paying my portion, but it's ridiculous what you're asking, and there are a lot of older people, and we just, a lot of us don't have two people working in our households. We can't afford this, you know? So, I wish you'd consider meeting us somewhere halfway or something. Thank you.
Two quick things. Actually, the city's paying like 90% of it, the majority of it, number one. Number two, North Main Street will be done next year, the parts you're talking about were supposed to be done this year and was put off to next year.
2016.
15 is going to be 16, so it is being done.
One of the questions, Mr. Mayor, and I hope I can clarify this, that came up with respect to the sidewalks, and I appreciate the feedback that we've gotten. Councilmember Hanske and I had a conversation about this, and I think there is an issue with communications that is out there. The sidewalks that the residents will be charged for, are those the ones that needed replacement? However, as we were going through the work, some of the work necessitated, it made better sense to take out the sidewalks and replace them rather than just leave them in place. The residents will not be charged for those sidewalks. We probably can probably get you some information, and maybe Mr. Potek's staff can show you which ones that you will and won't pay for, but just because your entire sidewalk is going to be redone does not necessarily mean that you're going to be paying for all of those. I can't answer each and every individual question because there really is a different answer to each and every resident, but we do have staff out there on a regular basis. I'm not sure who the staff engineer is out there for this project, Dave, but we can make sure that the staff engineer is in contact with you if you have any questions about your individual situation, so we can help you with that.
Anybody else care to come forward at this point?
My name is Gorna Omen, and I'm the owner of the house on the corner of Bowen and Custer, 1333 Bowen Street. Yeah, you're absolutely right, Mr. Olaf, about the sidewalks. That's what was written in a letter that was, you know, sent to every single one, you know, of us here on Bowen Street. Unfortunately, you know, but when I see, for example, my bill, my bill for a sidewalk just on the Bowen Street, it's $1,900. You cannot tell me that's only a few blocks, you know, that I'm going to pay for, plus $300 for a part of the Custer Street. So, but it's about the reason why this reconstruction was done. It is the interceptor, but also the, one of the reasons is because you are, the city is going to lift the sewer station, you know, from on Murdoch Street, okay? And the city is going to, according to your report, to your report of October 2013, that the city is going to save, this project is approximately going to save $300,000, so no spare parts you don't have to worry about, okay? So, this amount is similar to one that this neighborhood has to come up with. It's over $300,000. So, this save, it's annual save, right? So, every year without that station, city will, you know, save a $300,000. So, I believe and I think it will be fair and right and moral if city pays for a concrete and for a sidewalk, and we will pay for the rest of it, the remainder, whatever, it's probably the laterals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward?
My name is Sharon Kerner, and I live at 709 Merritt, and I basically came here to compliment the city on doing some blacktop work on Merritt by the main street and doing some blacktop work by the library and making those so that you can drive down it without going clunk, clunk, clunk. So, I thought that was a nice thing, but with these people talking, it made me wonder. I've been seeing signs all over town, "We buy houses cheap. We buy houses. Call us. Call us." And my fear is if these people can't get some kind of help that they can afford, maybe they're going to be forced to sell, and we'll run into a lot more buildings owned by rent, you know what I mean, rent-oriented owners, where we're trying to get away from that in some of our neighborhoods. In my neighborhood, I think there's only two of us that own the house, you know, our houses, and it doesn't make for the most pleasant living all the time when some of the renters come and don't care. And my only fear is if they can't afford this and they have to sell to somebody that's going to inevitably rent it out, we won't have a city of owners of houses anymore. So, that suddenly came to me, maybe you should think about that. I'm a little concerned, especially if it's elderly people who haven't planned. And my last thing is, what is, what is the timeframe that you let a person know they're going to be paying for a big chunk of that? Is it a year? Is it when they get the bill? Is it six months? Or do they know a couple of months in advance that that's coming?
The residents were notified last fall, and the bills will probably not go out until, the earliest would be late this year, more likely next year.
Okay. So, we almost have a couple of years.
So, it's almost two years from the time that they are here about it until the actual first installment needs to be paid.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else care to come forward at this point? Okay, you see no one come forward. Let's take us to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda is made up of items that are viewed to be non-controversial in nature. Administration has put them together, and what we'll do with these items is I will read through them. As I read through them, if you'd like to comment on a particular item, feel free to come up to the microphone to comment on that item as I read that particular item. Once we've gone through the comments, the public comments, we'll come back to the council for some discussion, and then a motion for approval, and then ultimately a vote. If at any point either a council member or citizen wants to have a particular item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately as a separate item, I'll be glad to do so, and we'll look at it separately. Okay, I'm going to start reading through them now. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Resolution 14-302, approved memorandum of understanding with Winnebago County Sheriff's Office for operation of a search and rescue craft. Resolution 14-303, approved disposition of surplus property to Ronald &amp; Jane Johnson LLC, land and railroad spur north of 3555 Moser Street. Resolution 14-304, approved plan development for construction of commercial strip center at 1500 block of South Keller Street. Resolution 14-305, approved plan development for expansion of UW Oshkosh Women's Center at 717 West Irving Avenue. Resolution 14-306, approved Winnebago County recycling surplus revenue ballot. Resolution 14-307, approved connecting highway change agreement with Wisconsin Department of Transportation for maintenance jurisdiction revision on state truck Highway 44 from US Highway 41 to 20th Avenue. Resolution 14-308, award bid for two nonlinear editing systems for Media Services Division to Digital Pictures, Inc. Resolution 14-309, approved purchase of fire alarm system, including design and installation for public safety building. Resolution 14-310, approve amended initial resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer and sanitary sewer laterals adjacent to Sawyer Creek, Foxtail Lane, to Clairville Resolution 14-311, approve amended initial resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer laterals, water main and water laterals, 20th Avenue. Resolution 14-312, rescind personal property taxes. Name of business, new to you. Resolution 14-313, partial allowance of claim, refund of property taxes for 2012 and 2013, partial rescission of property taxes. Hoffmaster Group for property located at 2920 North Main Street. Resolution 14-314, approval of special event, Oshkosh Elks Lodge, number 292, to utilize Rainbow Park for their 24th Annual Oshkosh Elks Sheepset Fishing Tournament, July 19, 2014. Resolution 14-315, approve appointment to plan commission. Resolution 14-316, approved special Class B licenses, combination Class B licenses, junk collector license, and operator licenses. Resolution 14-317, approve agreement for tipping fees for Riverside Parking Lot, Phase One Project. Resolution 14-318, approve purchase for street lighting poles and fixtures for Riverside Park Lot, Phase One Project. Okay, see no citizens coming forward, so I'm going to ask that the consent agenda come back to the council for any questions or comments on items.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just do have a question on Resolution 14-304. It does state in here that this is a two-unit facility. Does that mean it's going to be the noodles and the ATM? Is the ATM considered the other unit?
I'm not sure. That's probably a detail. Hopefully Erin will be, or Erin will be able to answer. I know one of them's noodles, but they may, I don't know if they have a tenant yet.
No, there's another tenant. They haven't, they haven't leased it yet. We're not aware of it.
Thank you.
I take your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cummings, I think you had a question.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on Resolution 14-318. What is, what does, what does the lighting look like? Is it compatible with others that is going up in the river? There's been some comments from citizens that we seem to have a lot of curious.
You can wait to answer them. You can go right ahead.
Probably weren't expecting me to answer on this one.
I wasn't. I was going to ask Mr. Davis to come up and comment.
It is, it's compatible with the other lighting for parking lots and with the lighting down in that area, because I spoke with Mr. Collins about that when we were drafting the resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments by council members or questions?
Yeah, Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Herman. I just, maybe it's a statement more than a asking a question. Resolution 14-312, 14-313, seems like we're constantly, or the last couple of council meetings, we're constantly being asked to rescind personal property taxes. My concern, I guess, is that that's money we've already collected, money we've already kind of counted on in our books, money that is being used as part of our budget, and now we're turning around and giving money back. Is there any way through the assessor's office, if it's through them, I know that the Hoffmaster Group property was connected to the state during the assessment, but it concerns me that we do that. It seems like more and more we're having that competition between the companies and businesses not agreeing with our assessments, and it seems to be a trend, and is there a way we can reduce that? Because I think eventually it's going to hurt our bottom line.
Each of these have their own little story behind them, so I won't belabor that. You focused on a couple of those. The one for Hoffmaster kind of surprised us because it is done by the state, as you said, that's totally out of our control. It's sort of odd that we're asking you to rescind something that you really don't have much control over. I'm sorry, but it's just legislatively, the council has to approve that. Personal property taxes, it's interesting. I was asked to, to, being on a conference call with the State Department of Revenue, or, excuse me, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau that's doing analysis about personal property taxes, and the amount of resources that we put in to collecting personal property taxes or getting that done, and the return we get is just not in key with all the other work that our assessor's office does. And the experience that I shared with the Legislative Fiscal Bureau was similar to a lot of other communities. There are other communities, Dodgeville, for example, with the Lands End area there, they're spending an inordinate amount of their resources to collect personal property taxes. Because we rely on self-reporting as required by state law, we are often chasing people to get that information, and if they don't provide the information, we're allowed to what's, do what's known as a doomage assessment, which is basically, we take our best estimate. I don't want to say guess, but we take our best estimate on what that can be. Sometimes people don't report because they've already gone out of business and walked away, and they just don't report back to us, and so we do a doomage assessment. Later on, we find out, oh, they are out of business, and then we have to redo that. It's a very minimal amount tonight, but you've seen bigger ones. I know that. And it's one of those things that I think we need to have a strong look at, and that's why I participated in this conference call. As much as I certainly don't want to lose the revenue from personal property tax, it still represents about 4% of our total take on property taxes, where we're spending 8% to 10% of our resources in the assessor's office chasing 4%. It just, it just seems out of proportion, and that's something we have to take, statewide we have to take a look at, and that's why I thought it was appropriate to participate in this, because we have to do something about this. It gets more regulated and more regulated in the states. What if we added this exemption and that exemption? The more exemptions you add, the harder it's going to be to collect, and the more time you're going to spend and get even less and less return. I think we need to have a full look at personal property taxes just in general, because to me, the system isn't working.
So much for local control, huh?
It's, it's, it's a tough rule. Not everybody, not every state has personal property taxes. Some do, and it's only on vehicles. I don't want to start that discussion, but there's a lot of public policy issues that are out there. You know, we have really cheap automobile registrations. Small compact car, you're paying $800 to $1,000 in some states. That's their personal property tax. So, it varies, and it's, well, who's going to pay, who's not going to pay, and that's really the debate that you have. But it is not, when it's self-reporting and we have to check on the system, it's a very inefficient way to collect taxes.
Thank you.
I don't know if I satisfied with that.
No, no, you did. It's just a concern.
It's a frustration at my level, too.
I guess our best route is contacting our local legislators or, I mean, because I haven't seen anything on their agendas talking about this, other than the governor a couple of times has given us some property tax breaks and things and that.
I think that's where it's starting. I think that's why the Legislative Fiscal Bureau requested that people meet on this, and because of where we are, I thought it was appropriate to chime in, and there were other communities throughout the state that said, "The administration of this tax is really hard. We got to, we have to fix it."
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing that, I'll just comment on one thing quickly here. On Resolution 14-306, approved Winnebago County recycling surplus ballot, I don't know whether I had a chance to read the background on that, but a comment is, we're constantly losing revenue in one place or another. But if you looked at that, two years ago, we ultimately ended up with $278,000 out of that. Last year, we ended up with $71,000 coming into us as revenue. This year, we're going to end up with $27,000. So, in two years, we've lost 90% of that recycling revenue, because recycling markets are getting destroyed. So, another area where we're getting hit on the revenue side, that's a big, it's a big, big loss in those two years. So, we're going to have to watch that, because we're not sure where that's going to go. It's difficult, because we're doing more recycling and getting less money as a result of it. It's difficult. Okay, look for a motion for the consent agendas presented to the council.
Some moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on any item?
Well, as a, as a former business professor, you should understand supply and demand.
I do. I don't know why. Any other discussion? Ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the consent agenda as presented to the council.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Hanske.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrie, seven.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. That takes us to a pending ordinance. This is the second reading. We read it last time. It's ordinance 14-319. I'll read it. If anybody would like to comment on it, please come up to the microphone after I've read it, and anybody's commented on it, we'll bring it back to the council. Ordinance 14-319, approval of striped bicycle lanes for both sides of Sawyer Street from Fifth Avenue to Fillmore Avenue on the east side. Fifth Avenue to Fillmore Avenue on the east side, to Buchanan Avenue on the west side. Parking regulation changes on Sawyer Street related to bicycle lanes, and speed limit change on Murdoch Avenue east of Bowen Street. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion second on ordinance 14-319.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment to the citizens that might be listening out there. The speed limit change on Murdoch Avenue east of Bowen Street came from a neighborhood association. We've talked a little bit about the effects of neighborhood associations, and how they can effectively work in their, in their neighborhoods, and this is just another example of a neighborhood association had a concern about a speed limit in a school zone area, and they brought it forward to the traffic review board, and got it approved to have it reduced and have it more uniformed in that area, make it safer for the kids in the school area. So it's another, another opportunity again for neighborhood associations to get involved in changes that affect their neighborhoods directly. Mrs. Palmyra was here tonight talking about the concerns they have in the Middle Village Neighborhood Association. So it just shows again that they, they do work, and that they do bring things forward that, to the council, that can be addressed by the council, and make things better in their neighborhoods. So I just wanted to make that comment on that part of that ordinance change.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to say that I'm very excited for the installation of the, of the bike lanes. As, as a mother with two small children, one who's still in one of those gigantic bike trailers, it's nice to have the opportunity to transport them safely across the city. This is a great gateway to the Tribal Heritage Trail, the Y Wash Trail from, from the south side of town. So I'm very excited to implement this and go forward with more bike lanes in the future. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote of the council members on ordinance 14-319.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Okay, it takes us to new resolutions. First resolution, resolution 14-320, approve tax increment district number 27 project plan, designate tax increment district number 27 boundaries, create tax increment district number 27 North Main Street Industrial Park. Anybody would like to come forward?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, before we go further, as noted in the documentation behind this, I am an employee of, a shareholder in my personal account, as well as in my 401K plan of the applicant for the TIF, so I will be excusing myself at this time from the meeting and recusing myself from any discussion and consideration of this particular application.
Okay, appreciate that. Any citizens like to come and speak to this? If not, I'm going to bring it back to the council for a motion and a second on resolution 14-320.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Okay, we'll have some discussion. I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to come up also. The staff has made a request to change the boundary. Did others note that in there? Someone will look at that amendment, if they want to look at that amendment, and possibly make that later. Let's hear about the, the TIF to begin, the TIF to begin with. So, Mr. Davis, would you like to talk about this, what's involved here?
Absolutely.
What you hope to accomplish, and how this is going to work?
Yes. The boundary is basically the North Industrial Park. Main Street is the, basically the center line down to Furnow. It includes the Perfect Seal, the Beemis property at Perfect Seal. They are requesting a PEGO TIF and return for job retention and job creation. Staff has reviewed all the financials related to that, and we believe this meets the requirements of the TIF applications for a PEGO. We also saw this as an opportunity to correct the stormwater situation in the North Industrial Park. The city had planned on examining this area and improving the stormwater management, certainly addressing both the flooding and the total suspended solids, the water quality requirements. And this is unique in that this, this industrial park does not have any regional detention that we have in the other cities' industrial parks, so we thought this would be a, a good opportunity to retrofit that type of facility that the city typically takes on in an industrial park, and make it, the land in that area more developable for the property owners, so that they can build buildings and employ more people on their property, rather than taking up that space with detention ponds that they would have to build and maintain. So we're bringing that business park or industrial park up to the level that we have for the rest of the industrial parks in the city. That is the bulk of the, the spending. There's a minor amount of administration when it comes to the, the rest of the TIF plan. So that's kind of the overview of what the, the TIF plan is proposing.
Any more questions? Mr. Davis?
Mr. Mayor? Just Mr. Davis, or, I see some representatives from Perfect Seal are here this evening. Can, can I invite you, you gentlemen forward?
Mr. Davis, don't go away.
As well. I just, we, we know that there's going to be some job creation associated with this, some, some job retention as well. Perfect Seal has been expanding, but, but my understanding is that you were faced with an issue of, if, if, if you were unable to expand here, of possibly having to move some of those jobs elsewhere. Could, could I just ask you gentlemen to explain the expansion situation you're in?
Sure. Paul Verbatim, I am president of Beemis Healthcare Packaging, Perfect Seal. I've been an employee there for 24 years. We are faced, obviously, with a very competitive situation in, in competing in the marketplace. We see this as an opportunity to position our company as a world-class leader in medical device packaging materials supplied globally. We have, we need to expand our business, both through technology, new, new equipment, manufacturing equipment, and in clean room manufacturing. Our products require that the product goes out clean, because it's used in a sterile environment in the surgical, in the surgical arena. So that's a big expanse. We're going to, I think the overall expenditure is somewhere in the neighborhood of $24 million? $24 million? And so we had a decision maker. Are we going to do it in North America, or are we going to go somewhere where wages are held a lot cheaper, and we can maybe take advantage of some, some wages in Mexico? Beemis has a manufacturing site in Mexico. We have an empty building down there in Monterrey, Mexico, that we could easily have moved into. But the success that we've had in North America, the success that we've had in our Oshkosh facility, the environment of the solid work ethic of the laborers, the talent that we have, with the support that we are going to get, or we're asking for from the city and the TIF, will help us to stay here, other than having to close our operation on North Main Street and move the entire operation to Mexico.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Other questions of Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, I have a couple of questions. With the amend proposed-
Excuse me, would you guys stay up there in case somebody else has some other questions I want to ask?
With the amend proposal, Packer is being taken out of the TIF, and partly it's because of them just recently being annexed into the city, and we didn't have a land use agreement with Tonoskosh. How is that going to significantly change the economic feasibility of the, of the plan?
The plan did not take into account any other growth in the district, other than typical inflation, so that would have been kind of like cream on the top of the, the, the financial analysis. Certainly, if they would expand, that would help, but the, the TIF did not need that development to make this project or the projects happen.
Okay. And I know you're not a stormwater expert, but there was a lot, a lot of discussion at the planning commission meeting about this kind of regional stormwater, the ponds and that. How does that affect Packer now, if they're not part of the TIF? Are they going to pay separately to be part of this, or are they not going to be hooked up to this?
That's yet to be determined. Certainly, they could be added to the TIF at a later date. They just can't be included at the outset here. So in a few years, we can take a look at that, and if they want to be added into the TIF district for a benefit for a regional detention pond, we could take a look at that and come back through the, the city council and see what the planning commission, city council, and the joint review board would have to say about amending that district to include Packer for a potential expansion.
Okay. Traditionally, the planning commission reviews this before it even comes to council. Is the planning commission aware of the amended proposed district boundaries?
No, that only came to light last week.
Do we have to take it back to them by our rules and regulations?
No, it doesn't require it, and I think Mr. Burridge and Mr. Davis were planning just to report that back to, report that back, because they had taken on the annexation issue a few weeks back, so they were aware why we were adding it, and it's just because of that provision in state law that, that we could, we can't add it to a TIF district. That's just the way the law requires it without a border agreement.
It's a three-day waiting time.
Yeah, so it's three, three-
Three-year, not three-day.
Three-year waiting time.
Three-year.
So our discussions, you know, we haven't had any real major discussions with Packer. We knew they were interested in having that available for future use, but no immediate use. So as long as they're not going to be developing it in the next three years, it really, it has a negligible impact on, on the TIF.
And then just one other, on that, what was I going to say? No. I guess that's it for now. Thanks.
Okay, take care, quick. Let me know. Other questions at this point in time? Okay, a couple of things for you on this one. This is to approve the TIF, means we're going to have a development agreement that will be coming.
Yes.
And in the development agreement, we can talk more about the jobs and auditing for the jobs and-
Absolutely.
Making sure that the jobs come as the dollars flow out.
Yes, and the council will-
That'll come in the development agreement.
That'll come back to council. The development agreement will come back to council.
Okay. Second thing, as I understand it on, on this, there's a, a 10-year, 10-year timeframe for the PEGO?
Correct.
In essence?
Yes.
In other words, if they generate enough increment, enough tax out of the increment to justify the $2 million, the $2 million will go to them, and if it doesn't happen within 10 years, they'll just get what's been done up-
Up to the 10 years. Yes, that's the way we-
Two million is the maximum.
Correct.
Okay. So in essence, it's a, an added protection of the city that will, that will push the development faster, which is what we'd like. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Feel free to sit down. No, no, not at this point. Okay, uh-
You do need an amendment, Mr. Mayor? Yep. You do need an amendment at this point. Staff recommends that amendment.
I was just going to get to that.
Oh, okay.
I mentioned that before. I want to get at least those first questions. Okay, now there's the amendment that's out there. If somebody would like to make the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the changes to the, like, amend the boundaries of TID number 27 to remove the recently annexed Packer property at the southwest corner of Moses Street and Snell Road.
A second.
This is the second. Now, if anybody out there would like to comment on the amendment only, not on the, on the whole project, but on the amendment, they're free to come to the microphone. That's the taking out 15 acres, roughly, little over 15 acres, 15 and a fraction. There ain't no one coming forward to bring it back to the council for discussion on the amendment to reduce the, the size of the boundaries, approximately 15 acres. Okay, if not, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the amendment to resolution 14-320.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, we now have a amended resolution 14-320. I will ask, see if there's any further discussion.
I'm just going to grab Mr. Peck.
We're not through yet.
Oh.
We still have to vote on the total package, so just, just one second, and then we can go get him. So now we have the amended 14-320. Any further questions on the amended? Okay, I'll ask for the clerk, take the roll call vote on resolution 14-320 as amended.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six.
Now, you've got him out of his shirt. Okay, that takes us to resolution 14-320, approve amendment to previously approved plan development relative to detention basin construction at 3735 South Washburn Street. Planning commissions recommend a denial on this one. Anybody would like to come forward to speak to that?
My name is Tony Welnick, owner of Bigger Chrome Shop and ZBW. Just a brief history on this. This was a difficult project to start. It was very difficult to find property, and as the expense grew, with the, with the added requirements of being on 41, the project did get out of budget, and Keller did what they could to, to keep it, the project going. And what they did, basically, is kept everything at a basic level as they went through and designed. As they did that, as we started building, many things had to be upgraded to my level. I thought it was at, not a quality level that I wanted, so many items were changed. It did increase expenses as well. One of the, one of the things that were changed, as we went through, was adding stone to the pond. I did notice a lot of swampy ponds that I did not like the look of it, and I requested Keller to give me a quote on the stone. It was a $9,000 upgrade, and I asked him to put it in. Shortly after the project was near completion, I did get a letter from, from the planning that there was not up to the specs of the drawing, that there was supposed to be vegetation around the pond, and not stone. I was told that I could put in a request to have it changed. I did that, and I felt, at the time, I didn't think it was an issue, because there was a lot of ponds in the area. They did add the stone, it looked very nice, and with the issues of the pond being in the middle of, the front of our building, is definitely the main focal point as you pull in. We have traffic on four sides of the building, or, I'm sorry, of the pond, and being on 41 frontage, it is very, of quality that we wanted, is what the, you know, a high-end quality ponds is what we look for. After we did, met with the planning commission last week, there was four issues that came up that were discussed about the pond having stone. One was of the forward of safety deterrents on waterfall, water quality and aesthetics. On the safety aspect, I did some research. I could not find any information that supported having stone as being less safe than having a swamp-like, high, tall, cattails, muck, slippery edge. So there was no basis that I could find that the stone was less safe than not having the stone. I felt that having a hard bottom and a hard shelf would be possibly safer than having a muck issued. On the terms of the waterfall subject, there was, the research I could find was that more birds tend to nest in, in the swamp and in the vegetation, increased insects for feeding, and the cattails are used in making nests. With that said, really didn't, I've not yet seen any waterfall or any kind of birds issues or really using the pond. Again, there is traffic on four sides of this pond, so I don't think it's a place that birds would want to gather. The water quality aspect of it, I did get, receive an ASBIL drawing from, from Oshkosh, show its built specs. I was told that it was up to the DNR requirements specifications, Wisconsin specifications, and Oshkosh specifications for water quality. The fourth item was aesthetics. With those items being said, the four items, aesthetics seemed to me was the, the main decision on this, and with aesthetics, I do have pictures of some of the ponds in the This is a pond that has the, which is right down the road from us. This is a, more of a swamp-like setup. It has the foliage around it. Also, four other ponds that are near me as well, that also has the vegetation. Here's a pond that has the, the stone riprap around it. And here's a pond at Beemis, I believe this was built in fall last year, that also has a stone. And this, this is our location with our retention pond and stone. And this, this is our location with our retention pond and stone. Basically, with aesthetics look being the major issue here, I feel that this is the best way to go, and I request it to, to stay that way. I did look into the research a little bit, what would happen if I had to remove it. It would be damaging current landscaping, damaging the lawn, possibly damaging the pond, asphalt, and, and the curb as well. And after, after it's removed, it would, you know, definitely turn into the swamp-like look, and basically get worse and worse every year. So I'm requesting basically to have the, the stone stalled as it currently is.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this, this point? Is nobody coming forward at this point? I'll bring it back to the council. There are a motion and a second, and resolution 14-321.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Cummings, then Mr. Peck.
Hey, I was gonna call it Mr. Birch.
I was gonna do the same thing. Mr. Birch.
We got a couple guys that would like to ask you some questions. Mr. Cummings, you go first, then Mr. Peck.
Seniority.
Explain what, what really is at issue here. There was a plan that was approved by the plan commission, and petitioner arbitrarily changed the plan without notifying us until it was a done deal.
Well, what I can tell you is that as part of the, the previous plan development that was approved, I think in 2012, for this site, we did approve that with the condition on the natural plantings around that detention basin. So that was what got approved at the plan commission. That's what got approved unanimously at the council follow-through. That's what went through as part of our site plan review process, as far, part of them getting the actual permit. So at tho, at those levels, we did approve the natural, or we, we had that condition for the natural planting. At some point, it did get changed. From our, from our standpoint, we didn't authorize a change, I can tell you that. But somewhere, somewhere along the line, it got changed.
Mr. Peck.
Basically, I, I had the same question in that, as, as Mr. Birch said, is that a plan was approved based on the, the natural styled detention basin, as well as a landscape plan that was not followed? Changes were made. We approved the plan. That's what should have been followed, and it wasn't followed. I, I can understand the situation petitioner is in right now, but they, they, their contractors were well aware of what was expected of the site.
Correct, and I, I might add to that with, with respect to the whole natural planting requirement. It's, it's been a consistent requirement for the last few years. When it, when something comes through in one of our high corridor, one of our high corridor profiles, like Highway 41, where we actually have additional architectural standards for the development in there, we, we have put this as a standard condition for at least four, I think, four or five years. So it's something that as a plan commission, as a council, it's a condition that's not new coming through the system. So it's something we've been, we've been consistently doing as part of the plan development.
So there could be other ponds within the area, but because they're not necessarily in the quote Highway 41 corridor, they may look different, but if it falls within the Highway 41 corridor, it has to follow.
That's, it's a standard condition when we, as part of the plan development review, when, when they put a detention pond out front. It's also standard when we do some of the regional detention ponds that Public Works is working on as part of their projects. We also put that on as a standard, I think as a standard condition, but they, they pretty much plant natural vegetation around theirs routinely now.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Hi, Mr. Birch, I, beyond the aesthetic concerns, I had an impression that, that there are, in fact, some water quality issues related to natural vegetation really versus what's, what's currently installed, I guess as, as it would relate to runoff and discharge.
Well, there are some, there are some environmental benefits of having a natural-planted detention basin versus a riprap. And Steve is gonna come up and save me and help me.
The advantages of having the natural planting versus the riprap side of, the plants will take up nutrients, phosphorus, nitrogen. Those are key elements that get into the water and cause the algae blooms and pollution downstream. While currently, the DNR regulations require only the suspended solid regulation, the Fox River watershed is under a study for a total of daily maximum load of the nutrients, we are looking at that coming down shortly in the next five years or so, where we're going to be required to be removing these nutrients from the water before it enters Lake Winnabe or the Fox River. So the plants do help absorb that nutrient, take it out of the water before it discharges downstream.
And.
Go ahead.
One other question then for Mr. Birch. I, if, if the council were to, were to deny this request tonight, and there would be a requirement for Mr. Wallnick to, to go through some revision to the, to the development on his property, I, I understand that they've been in, working with your office, and there's, your, your office is, is working with them to kind of mitigate the, the impact of, of the cost at least to Mr. Wallnick and his business, and, and attempt to find a solution that meets the spirit of each of the requirements of, of the development proposal. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. We're open to, we're open to an approach that, you know, to look at something, some type of additional landscaping measures that may mitigate or mitigate the, you know, to get at some of those aesthetic impacts that we were actually looking at. I think there are things that they can do out there to reserve some of that rock. They might have to selectively take out some of that rock in some of those locations, and then put landscaping to buffer it. We are open, we are open to that discussion and what, and if we were gonna go down that route, denying it, instead of denying it, what I would do is refer it back to the plan commission. That way, we can work with the petitioner to bring another plan back through the plan commission that would ultimately end up here.
Okay. This is one, I, I did attend the planning commission meeting the other day, so I was there for that. We had a little, had a long planning commission meeting, so we got to participate in the planning commission meeting the other day at, at the same time. But looking at the substantive water quality issues, I thought I understood you to say there are, there are no really, at this point, there's no real quality, water quality issues or stormwater issues that meets all the requirements.
It meets the requirements through the DNR technical standards for the water quality that they are required to meet the state code and the City of Oshkosh.
And our, and our, so all, all the requirements are met, so there's, there's no water quality or water quantity issues associated with this.
Correct.
Okay. One of the things is, I, I did have a chance to listen the other day to the, to the comments that were made, and a few observations. I mean, we do have the natural plantings, which we ask in the more public settings, but we do have exceptions and allow them in a number of places that are, that are still somewhat public in a lot of, in a lot of ways. They did go against what was said, no doubt about that. There was a, there was some stipulations there, and that was said. They went against it, I think in some ways innocently and honestly, but they did go against that. And that was the basis of really the rejection by the planning commissions. I understood there was not really a substantive discussion of, of some of the substantive issues. There was, there was discussion, but in the end, when I heard people talk about the votes, Mr. Cummings, it, it had to do primarily with the fact that there was a stipulation that they use natural plantings, and they didn't use it. We said use it, and they didn't use it. So that was a rationale that was.
There were, there are other issues too. It was more than just, oh, there's trees that were not properly put in.
But that, that, that was aside from the pond and the riprap.
But it was, the whole plan that was approved was not followed. It's more than just the pond.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's one of my concerns is that sometimes we need to take a broader approach, and we have the ability to do it, because if there's no negative effect here, because if one comment was made, if they'd come and asked for the change, they would look at the substantive, but mainly it wasn't a substantive issue, it was mainly, we, we had a rule, you didn't follow it, and there were some other side issues attached to that. The riprap, people talk about aesthetically. Some people like it, some people don't like it, as, as the case may be. No major effect on stormwater. There's no cost to the city if we approve this. There's a major cost to, if, if we deny it, there's a rather significant cost to the firm. We want to try and help firms to the extent we can. But $9,000 have already been put in, plus any additional cost. I would like to see one or two things happen here. One is that we, that we approve it, because I think, looking at the broader picture, I think it makes sense to create an exception. We do it, there are other exceptions within the city. Number one. Number two, we gotta try and work with people. So I'd either like to approve this or refer it back to the planning commission and have you work with them and come back with a different plan, rather than deny, flat out deny it. So I will not vote to, I will not be looking at, at a denial. I will not vote no on it. I would look at an amendment to refer it back to see what could be worked out, or I would want to approve it.
Mr. Mayor, your concerns about the additional costs are, are heard. They were heard last week. The fact of this particular issue is that there was a plan, a planned development amendment approved that said X, Y, and Z will be done. X, Y, and Z were not done. I, we cannot approve, you know, say, we want you to do this, but oh, now that you did this, oh, we'll go back and say it doesn't matter to us, because that sets a bad precedent. Because then that basically says, what the council approves doesn't matter. You can come back, say there was a hardship, we didn't understand this, we didn't do whatever, but oops, sorry, you know, the old it's better to seek forgiveness than ask approval. So what I will do is I will refer this back to the plan commission to come to some type of, negotiated, I don't know if that's the right term, but that basically tries and takes this to where it should have been, where it was clearly defined, no ambiguity involved in that, and to try and take the concerns of additional cost into account, but with everyone fully understanding that what was approved was not done. So like I said, I will make a motion to refer this back to the planning committee.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion on that. Actually, anybody could come up and talk to that, referring it back.
Hello, I'm Diane Nichols, and I live at 1329 Bone Street, and you're talking about water. Well, I want to tell you, they, I think they used our lawn, our front lawn, not lawn, but all the dirt they kept putting in front of our.
Could you, could you, we're talking about a specific proposal, a specific company. If you want to talk about that, you can talk about that.
Well, this ain't a company. I just want to tell you how terrible our water is. I have orange water, a great bathtub, and I keep telling, Steve Dipperner, he's so sweet, and he says.
I understand.
They'll flush the hydrant, but they don't.
I would appreciate that during citizens' comments. We have another citizens' comments, and you can make mention of it at the same time.
I just wanted to mention that there was one stipulation, I did not have enough shrubs. That is all completed now. The last shrubs were taken care of today. That was the other thing that was mentioned in the report. On this project, it is a very large project, at least for myself. There was a lot of stipulations from every angle, from every, from state to the city level, that there's a lot of rules and different items that need to be taken care of. Everything has been followed all the way through, and this is one that was, went to prove it better. So this was actually hoped to improve it, make it above and beyond. This was not deliberate act to go around or manipulate, you know, the requirement, so.
Mr. Wallnick, if, if, if we take this measure to refer this back to plan commission, and there's an opportunity for, for you and the city to, to work out some kind of a situation in between what you have now and what was required in the original plan, do, do you have the ability to either get back with your, your, your land, your, your survey engineer that, that you had employed, or your general contractor that you employed?
I have nobody on staff now to take care of that, but I could definitely, definitely hire somebody to, to re-lay it out, I guess, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I, I'm one, I, you know, I, I don't know too what, if, if there was any liability that they incur for not really following the, the city plan and the city code.
Not, not to throw the Keller under the bus, I guess, but when this was all put through, the main person that actually started this whole project left Keller, and their main person that took over came in at the start of the project. They attended all the meetings, not myself. They're the one that got all the permits, got the case from the city and the planning. So when I, I'm okay to go with this, it was, like I say, it was an aesthetic thing to improve it, at very big expense. I am willing to, to come up with other ideas to make it better. Looking at having to remove the riprap would be very, I'm not sure how I'm gonna remove it, if it's gonna be done by hand or dug out. Adding additional flower beds, I'm all for that. We've, we're at the quantity, quantity of shrubs and trees that were supposed to be. I believe we have more shrubs than we have required. Some trees were moved to the side because they could not be placed where they were through the, the landscape, and some trees were also in front of our display that pushed to the side. So the shortage of shrubs was fixed, but to, there are some areas around the pond that we could increase shrubs. I'm definitely willing to do that. It's not the, it's not the expense that I have to put into it to, that I worry about to make it better, it's the expense that I have to put in to make it look worse, so.
Yeah, one question on your last comment. That's your opinion, it would make it worse, right?
Yes, it is an opinion.
So you're basically, you're basically disagreeing with our program that we have in place for the 41 corridor? You don't agree with that type of, of stormwater detention basin having aquatic plants and things in it? Your belief is that riprap is a better.
I never actually studied the, the corridor plan.
Right.
My opinion, and I believe many other people, that the riprap looks better and aesthetic pleasing. So that's my angle, just aesthetic pleasing.
Okay. Well, my concern with this is, this has gone through the whole process, you know, city planning, the plan commission, we approved under council, and you arbitrarily did something different. Are we gonna start managing by exception? Every time we go through, and these, this takes manpower. Are we gonna tell our planning department, well, kind of give it your best shot, but if the person wants to change it last minute, go for it? I think we've got programs and policies and procedures in place, and it, it just frightens me when we start to manage by exception. It's, I mean, it was, you had blueprints, you had drawings. Here's what's, here's where everything is gonna go, and then it didn't go there. Is this gonna apply to building of houses and, and commercial buildings? That we approve them, but now let's do it differently. I just, I think it's a dangerous slope.
I can, I can see where you're coming from, too. In step, I think we have to look at things individually, because we do create exceptions from time to time on various things if we think there's a reason to do it. And that's really a judgmental issue that the seven of us have to make. That's the judgment we'll make here. We do that. Zoning appeals is the same type of thing, because we do have a lot of stipulations out there. So I, I think at times, we make judgments, and that's what we're here to do, is make judgments, just not rule and think of the, the greater good. We want to also demonstrate that we, that we try to work with people when they come to town and create jobs and create taxes, and don't ask for TIFs and things like that at the same token, so. I want us to be open to working with people at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, we were open to working, we were open and to work with them at the beginning, and laid out the plan and said, this is what we'll do, this is what needs to be done. We want to work with you, we understand this. And, you know, it was clearly, it was clearly stated in black and white what needed to be done, and it was not done. And had, had there, had the discussion come and said prior to it being done, had it come, had it come before the plan commission and the council to say, this is what we would like to do, because this is why we think it's a better thing for the city, that's, that is working, then that's working with someone. But to come and say, I totally went against the plan that was approved, we understood what was approved, it was there, it was black and white, it was given to, it was given to your engineers, correct?
Yes.
So your engineers understood this?
Yeah.
They, they saw that, it's okay.
There was, I mean, there is a lot of, a lot of, in a project, that there are a lot of things that need to be followed.
Right.
This is one of many.
So it was there, we're open to working with you, but working with you prior to making So, it was there, we're open to working with you, but working with you prior to making unapproved changes, because it's like Mr. Cummings says, a business could come into town, say, "Here's what we're going to do," yes, they bring jobs in and everything else like that, but then they say, "Well, look, we changed this, we did this, we didn't do this." You know, is, is it right now, I would, I mean, I think we need to take a look at, is vote on it, for referral back to the committee, and that's working with them to see what can be done. That's the motion on the floor.
I know, that's the motion, I'm just telling you what I think, I disagree with you on this one, so. Okay, anybody else want to comment on?
I went out there on Sunday, just to look with my own eyes, I was here for the meeting last Tuesday, so I did catch a bit of this, and it looks great, I think it looks absolutely wonderfully, well-done, very neat, very clean. I just can't get past the fact that you didn't ask before it was done. That gets me every time. I sympathize with you, any cost involved with this, but it was an approved plan, you didn't do that, that's what it comes down to. So I hope you take advantage of it, and work through with the Plan Commission, and we can look at it again at a future date.
Well, I'm definitely learning how the process works, there are a lot of things with this business that we've had to make decisions as we go. I'm still unclear when I need to do, when I need to do what. If I want to put additional flower beds, if I want to do anything, I guess I need to ask for permission, no matter what I do. Go on, over.
What I would suggest is, is that after the meeting tonight, you get with Mr. Burridge and schedule a meeting, and as he nods his head, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to work with you.
We'll wait, see how we vote on this.
You know, after taking a look at it, I've driven by quite frequently, and I agree with Ms. Pansky as well. From my understanding, it doesn't seem like it was a malicious intent. I, you know, I absolutely agree with Counselor Peck and Counselor Cummings as well, but I think, you know, that in some ways, there's a little bit of a gray area, I think because I don't think it was a malicious attempt to go around the rules, you know, what I got a sense of is more that, with being a business owner and tackling this project, it may perhaps have been a bit overwhelming. I think you know going forward, that probably, if you have any questions or anything, certainly contact City Hall, but I think also, too, we have to keep in mind that we've really been discussing for the last couple of years, economic development, and how we do want to be friendly to businesses. So, you know, I am certainly for kicking this back to Plan Commission, and having you work with them, and, you know, hopefully, the experience will, you know, educate you better moving forward, you know, as you, you know, hopefully expand onto your business.
That's fine.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on the motion, which is to refer it back to Planning Commission, have them work with the Planning Commission, make a roll call vote.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
No.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried five-two.
Okay, takes us to Resolution fourteen dash three-two-two, approve authorizing the submission of a Wisconsin Department of Transportation facilities for economic assistance, DEA grant application for railroad spur and loading platform in Southwest Industrial Park. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Not, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and second on Resolution fourteen dash three-two-two.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Davis, you want to come up and maybe describe what's going on here? Talk about the roles of other people in this?
Sure. The city has been working with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Oshkosh Corporation, Wisconsin Southern Railroad, to come up with a long-term solution that will help Oshkosh Corporation stay in the city of Oshkosh, and they have a grant program to help relocate a rail spur that will help them with their transportation for their product going out on rail. We're hoping to actually expand the serviceability of that, the temporary spur they have at the end of the line right now, behind Allerton, convert that into a twenty-four-seven type of operation with lighting, that they'd be able to control, that Wisconsin Southern would be able to manage away from the residential area, something that the city would be able to regulate, monitor, as we see fit, since it's going to be on the city's property. As I mentioned, working with Oshkosh Corporation, Wisconsin Southern, we're looking at developing, I don't think we have the final numbers at this point in time, but getting contributions from Oshkosh Corporation for the improvements that we're looking for out there, in addition to the two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We're estimating it's still about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project, so there could be somewhere between fifty and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of local funds that we'll have to put towards that, and that would be coming out of TID eighteen, I believe.
Any other questions here?
Yeah. Are there any other companies that'll benefit from this railroad spur, or is this strictly an Oshkosh Corp railroad spur?
Well, we're using Oshkosh Corp as the reason for doing that, but since it would be a city-owned facility, other people could use that with the agreement with the city and the railroad to service them, so yes, it would open up that opportunity.
Do we, do other companies in that Southwest Industrial Park have rail service now?
There are some others that get direct rail service onto their property, this would be the only, say, public rail spur that would be available, and I think Wisconsin Southern sees this as a potential opportunity to expand some of their service in the Oshkosh area.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? What are our chances of getting some additional financial assistance from those who will benefit significantly from it, namely, the railroad and the Oshkosh Corp?
I don't, I can't give you a percentage or an odds-type of thing, maybe I defer that to Mr. Roloff, to see if he-
You had all the easy questions.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly, we're doing what we can to encourage the contributions from the other beneficiaries and partners on this, but I don't have a specific number that I can give you at this point in time.
Oshkosh Corporation has agreed to fund the, any capital costs associated with lighting for that site. They have higher standards than I think we would normally need, and so they're willing to fund those portions. The railroad is the difficult, the difficult one in this group. Allen's had more interactions with them more recently, perhaps they see more, see the light a little more, but the range of fifty to a hundred-and-fifty thousand of our potential contribution is, is a wide range. I think we budgeted one-hundred thousand, so we'd obviously like to keep it under a hundred thousand. I've had discussions with County Executive Mark Harris, the county participates in a program where they annually contribute twenty-five thousand dollars a year into a program that is intended to maintain the short-line type of railroads, and our, the railroad in this case ends right in Oshkosh, and Mr. Harris is sensitive to what's going on in our situation, and he has directed his staff to withhold the payments to Wisconsin Southern, this consortium, until such time as this issue's worked out. We're hoping we can impress upon them that they need to put some resources into this, and hopefully, they will, and if they don't, then we're going to be working with the county to maybe use those funds that they're withholding for this purpose.
Questions, comments? Only the comment, this has to do with the concerns of the noise in the neighborhood out there, too, this is one reason, the other probably good, eliminate that noise, hopefully it will, this will eliminate the noise out there, do you think?
It'll move it.
It's going to move it, but I can't believe it'll totally eliminate it.
Yeah, I think you'll still hear train whistles when they would cross the road, and they still will use the end of the spur that goes down to Twentieth, and I believe they'll have to blow the whistle at that point in time, but you won't, I don't think any residences would hear the clanging of the actual trucks being loaded on the flatbed cars.
We can make that a quiet zone, too, it'll take four years, but-
Then you can't pull their horn there.
And another two-hundred-thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think the residents are accustomed to the Twentieth being closed, or the lights going on when they're backing up, when they're loading trucks over near Lapham Hickey and some of those other places. It was, this was a new phenomenon, they were loading those trucks from Oshkosh Corp. That, when the Oshkosh Corp was ramping up with their defense truck building, that is when this all started. I think the residents were very accustomed to the crossing at Twentieth, and that really wasn't the issue.
Okay, all right. Okay, take a roll call vote on Resolution fourteen dash three-two-two.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. First one, tomorrow, folks, we get together at the UWO Welcome Center, we're not at where we were last year, so the Welcome Center starts at nine, go to, go to five, do our strategic planning for the city, we had the three-year plan before.
Ballroom C, as you go on the main entrance, the last door on the right.
Okay, parking's no issue over there, correct?
It's during, it's not during the school year, you'll be okay.
No permits or anything like that are needed, so don't worry about that. Okay, we have a budget workshop on July twenty-third, Wednesday, at five PM. Last year, we tried to keep those budget hearings to two hours, I assume we'll try and do the same.
That's our goal.
Agree we can. Okay, next item is the Grand Opera House lease renewal, we got some information on that, and I think we have some council members who are involved with some organizations that have some interest in this, namely, the Foundation Board at the Opera House, and the Convention Visitors Bureau, so, why don't you again provide us with some background, and how you want the council to move forward on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This lease agreement was most recently written in two thousand and five, and it provided for an automatic renewal of five years at, every five years, provided that no notice of non-renewal was given by July first of the ensuing year, so it got renewed without any discussion back in oh-nine, primarily because the roofs, that, the roof situation had just come down then, and so we knew that we needed to keep that relationship going for a long time. There have been issues that have been raised, questions raised about the formula, questions raised about some of the provisions in the lease agreement, and it was brought to my attention by the attorney's office that we needed to do that notice. I shouldn't say I wasn't aware of it, but I'd forgotten about the six-month lead time, city attorney's office let me know, so really, I had no other choice but than to do what's known as an official notice of non-renewal. It wasn't the intent to non-renew, but just had to get the ball rolling, and so Joe Furlough, the director of the Grand, understood that. We just had a conversation on Monday, so we talked about some of the parameters. The most complicating factor in there is that the agreement calls for an allocation of a portion of room tax dollars to the Grand to offset some of its operating costs. Remember that the Grand is owned by the city, the Grand Opera House is owned by the city, we lease it to the Opera House Foundation to run, so they cover all the operating costs, we're responsible for major capital improvements, such as roofs that are nearly falling in, and a lot of things in between, and so we work with, closely with Mr. Furlough, his staff, and Mr. Urban with our facility staff, to work on those types of issues. So those are the things that, under normal circumstances, we should be talking about, but obviously, the room tax situation is something that periodically people want to revisit, and so we'll talk about that during our discussions.
Let me just ask for a clarification on this. Room tax is nineteen percent of the seven percent, but what is the room tax right now?
I believe the room tax is ten percent.
Correct.
So-
That has changed since then, so what has happened over the past few years? Have they been getting nineteen percent of the first seven percent? Or when we took it from seven to ten, did they get nineteen percent of ten percent?
Nineteen percent of the, of the seven percent.
So the last three percent, they didn't get any percent?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that, to make sure that, I suspect there was some discussion somewhere, which didn't come to us over that.
The formula is as complicated as I've ever seen room tax dollars get distributed.
Okay, and about, what's the dollar value of that?
That amounts to about, I believe Joe told me, this year was very, much better because of the hotel, everything.
The room tax is up.
Hundred-thirty thousand dollars out of that, the city general fund contributes about sixty-five thousand to the Grand, so the Grand in total, from all city sources, gets about two-hundred thousand dollars a year, but remember that their operating budget is probably somewhere in, along the lines of six-hundred-plus-thousand dollars, so the Grand Foundation covers about two-thirds of all their operating costs. We cover mostly building-related items, because we're the landlord and they are the tenant.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go.
Mr. Roloff, could you explain the room tax, as far as what the state statute requires the room tax to be used for, and who's eligible to receive room tax? Because I know we have several new council members, and they may not be aware of how the room tax, it's very specific to what it can be used for, and why does the Grand receive room tax? The Grand, there's a longer history to why the Grand receives the room tax, the room tax by state law, and there's a lot of grandfathering situations, because this law has evolved over the years a great deal, and nowadays, for those tax dollars that have not been reserved, they have to go to a marketing, a local tourism marketing group. The only tourism marketing group that exists is the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau. This was done many years ago as a way to generate tax dollars for the Grand. In the nineteen-eighties, when the Grand was revived, the city was looking for a way to fund costs associated with the Grand, because the Opera House Foundation was literally just getting its legs. They, they, they virtually didn't exist, and so the city, and I'm getting a lot of this from history, that I've been learning over time, but the city, at the time the city could do this, the city could say, "We're going to increase the room tax," and the city designated a portion of the room tax for, for the Grand. That has since been replaced by the provision in the lease agreement that just, that is before us nowadays, so it has evolved over time, but we currently take nineteen percent of our first seven and forward it to the Grand.
Go ahead.
I guess one of the questions I would have is, you know, with the history on that, was that something that was intended for a limited time, or was this something that was all, was intended to be forever?
I believe, and again, you're asking me what it was like in nineteen eighty-six, I was doing a lot of different things in nineteen eighty-six, that wasn't one of them, but I believe that it was intended to be permanent, I really do, because now, the policy question of is room tax the right vehicle to fund the Grand, that's a great policy discussion for policymakers, but the reality is, is that at the time, the history was that, I think Mr. Free felt that that was an effective way to help fund the Grand to avoid using property tax dollars for that same purpose, because we're still, we're still, we still own the building, we still have those responsibilities, so we're kind of stuck in the middle on this, this complex issue, because we still, we still have responsibility for the Grand as a structure, because it's our building.
And I understand that, I just think I, we've got a number of issues surrounding the Grand that we're going to need to address, and maybe perhaps tonight's not necessarily the time to do it, but certainly, we've got some other things to discuss, as well as money owed to the city, and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, and it's, and that's why we did the notice, we've got, we've got several months to get the ball rolling on this type of thing.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, I'm just wondering, I mean, what are we anticipating in a workshop, or will there, how will this, how will this come to a measure in which the council will discuss it further, or be able to get input from, you know, the board of the foundation, or Mr. Furlough?
I suggested to Mr. Furlough that he needs, he has a lot of new board members, I think he needs to bring his board up to speed on what's going on, and I think because it involves some room tax dollars, I think it may be beneficial if CVB and Grand folks get together as well. I don't think this is simply just a, just a, an issue for the council, because this is how we work together to move the city forward. The Grand does things to help promote tourism, the CVB does things to help promote the Grand, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think if they start discussing this issue, now the, the dialogue is now open, and I think that this is where we have the opportunity to have these discussions.
But again, following up, where do you see this kind of going time-wise?
Time-wise, I would think that we want to have this done before we start getting into the meet-a-budget season with hearings and that, so my goal would be to really have it done in October, by October.
So you would recommend they get together within the next month or so?
Yeah, and I suggested to-
And when's, when are we to get involved? Now, one thing we do have on the councils, we have somebody that sits on the CVB, Mr. Herman at the end, and next to him, right next to him, we have somebody that sits on the Foundation Board, so we do have people on both those boards, who also will be part of those discussions, I would assume, so perspectives may be different, so.
I know the time gets very short with everything going on, but Mr. Furlough was So he needs to give them some background about, about all this, uh, and also what the implications for the Grand itself. And the CVB, obviously, um, they've been very successful. Uh, the new hotels have generated tax dollars. Some of that's going to the, the Grand. We've gotta get them to working together. And if we can be a vehicle to, to bring that dialogue together, you know, I'm happy to assist. Mayor?
Just a comment, because this is under, um, council discussion direction, to, um, the deputy mayor's comment on, you know, the building in itself. There are maintenance issues in this contract. I, I hope we're not just focusing our whole thing on the room tax, and that we are looking at the overall contract. Because there, there are dollar amounts that the foundation's responsible for, the city's responsible for, um, there's insurance and operations, there's rental rates, there's a whole bunch of things in this contract. And I, and I think, since we have sent the notice to them that we want to renegotiate, we want them to run the Grand on behalf of the city, but that we don't just focus on one area of the contract, that we really, really look at the whole contract. Because as you said, this, this hasn't been updated since 2004.
Correct.
And so that's a long time. I mean, the city attorney wasn't even here, city clerk was here, you weren't here. Mr. Heilmann, who was the chair of the, or the, that school board, head of the school board, I mean, Mr. Hedge isn't part of the, the Grand Board, I don't believe anymore.
There are not a lot of folks.
There's hardly anybody in this agreement that was part of it. So I think it, it's a time to do an overall revaluation of the contract, not just focus. But I know the room tax is a big issue.
But it's one, and we did.
And it's a concern, as, as the mayor mentioned, I do sit on the CVB board. It is a concern of the CVB because of the lack of what they feel is gained by the room tax. So, to what they bring to heads and beds in Oshkosh.
Yep. And that's, uh, with that said, I, Mr. Urban and Mr. Fitzpatrick were at the meeting with me, because it primarily is a lease agreement about a landlord and a tenant. That's primarily what this is about. And so we understand that, so we, we gotta do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Point? Okay, thank you. Okay, next thing, discussion of options regarding waiving the rules to change August 12, 2014 council meeting to August 11, 2014, Monday, due to partisan primary election. So indicating the background, informational background on this, when there's an election on a Tuesday, in a primary, this is, they moved the primary back this year. It stated that the council meeting should be, under the rules, the council should meet on Wednesday, the day after. Uh, this has come up, because last year we made reservations to go to Europe, almost a year ago, with the idea we'd be leaving on Wednesday after a council meeting, and then they suddenly changed the, uh, the, uh, primary back. So, um, it's, it's, it's up to the council. One of two things would happen. One, uh, I'd appreciate it, because I could be here on Monday. I cannot be here on Wednesday. But if we want to stick with that, on Wednesday, uh, the deputy mayor would take over, and that would be fine. Try not to miss meetings, so, uh, so it's sort of up, up to people. So we can have a discussion. If, if people agree to go to Monday, it's gonna mean we're gonna have to do something in the next two sessions. They'll basically waive the rules. If we want to stick with Wednesday, if that works out better, because I have nobody, idea what other people's schedules are, then we'll just go with the rules the way they exist, and I won't be here. And Ms. Allison Osby will preside over the meeting. So I don't know where people are with what their particular calendars are.
I can tell you, you know, Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict on Monday.
Yes, I do.
I might be able to get here by 6:30, 7:00.
Okay. Well, maybe it oughta go on Wednesday, because you had a conflict on Monday.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I'd point out that the Parks Advisory Board meets at 6:00 PM that, that Monday evening as well.
Okay. I guess we have a decision then. It'll be on Wednesday, and I will not be here.
And no action is necessary, then?
We're counting on you.
I'll try to keep the fires burning.
Keep the fires burning. Okay, so we're set on that?
Correct.
All right, then. Citizen statements to council is the next thing. This is another opportunity for citizens to talk about something they may be unhappy with, or maybe something they're happy with that's going on in the city. Um, and if you'd like to speak to it, please come to the microphone.
I interrupted before, I didn't know.
Just give your name, give your name and address, and you'll limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak to nothing on the agenda that was on the agenda.
My name is Diane Nichols, and I live at 1329 Bone Street. But we have a problem. They're having this road built, and they always would bring these, all the, uh, these truckers would bring all their stones and all their mud right, and they used our house like their garbage can. All of them, they would pack right in front of our house. And then they'd take their, these seven engineers, or not engineers, but people would, uh, from their company would take them down to other ends to another end. Well, our water, it keeps raising since the last time, and this time, now my bill has never been $224 and some odd cents. And we are, there's only the two of us, and we buy water, and our orange sink is orange now, plus our bathtub is gray. And I bought a new blouse yesterday, beautiful, with all beads, and I, I wanna always wash my clothes out before I wear them. So I rinse this new blouse out six times a day to look decent. And so we need some kinda help, and this water, this case, just terrible, and it has the horrible smell. And I just talked to that other lady that was here a little while, and she said her house smells too from the water down the street. So I did call, talk to Steve Dittmer several times. He's a very loving man, and he tries to help us with everything. And he said, well, he said that hydrant has to be flushed. That was, I don't, then the other time I called, their hydrant has to be flushed. If they do flush it, I don't know. But the last time I watched them, when they flushed it, they flushed it off from here to here. They used to flush it down, almost down half of a street. And I have this horrible stuff, so my bill's going up higher and higher and higher on our light, our gas, I mean, water bills. How much is it gonna go? And they, and this company, this PTS, was, uh, I call them the wrecking people. The day they mined it, with mine, um, everything went wrong. Our front stone wall cracked in places, and around the side and our back, we just have hunks out like this in two big places.
Dynamite.
Dynamite, when they dynamited. And I told them about it, and one of our cellar windows is almost hanging out, but it's not out, but it's the frame of it, because it's our basement. And I told him about him, and he said, "Well." He said, uh, I said, "Are you gonna pay for it?" He said, "Well, no." He said, "Call your city council." He said, "And your, uh, city mayor." He said, "He'll take care of it." "Well, I don't know." Some, so far, all the while, since I spent several months writing, so far, nobody's been paying anything. And how much is my water gonna go to? For the price of it, what I really, we're not really using. We're buying water like you can't believe. So how am I gonna have this gray water and orange sink, and tasting terrible water? Would you explain that to me?
Can I explain it? Let's do the three or four things going on here. Who, who should be contacted for, for which ones?
I'm not sure who Mr. Dittmer talked to, but we will be talking to the people from water distribution, the people that do the flushing, and they can come out and check your meter, they can come out and, and look at your service, and, and look at the water problems in the area. Those are the people that have to do the maintenance, so.
It doesn't always taste like that, but in the morning, it's really bad from settling on the night. And it has a little bitter to it.
Yeah, second question had to do, there's damage to the house from?
What?
There was damage done to the house?
Not from, from the other company, because I don't know exactly what's from, uh, when they dynamited. But then there's a whole bunch of seven different people, contractors like Almo, and everybody brings their dirt by our house. At the time, when they brought all those stinky stones down, and it smelled like manure, but they would bring them, I don't know where they would get all these stones and stuff from, but they would dump it. We always had the dumping rock. Everybody, they would take from our whole area, where they would take one thing way down to that end, then they'd come for more stones to take up this way. But every time they would come and bring it, they always forgot and brought it right to our house.
Okay. I'm trying to get, do these things one at a time. You say there's damage done to your house? A window was cracked, or things like that, from?
That's an invasion.
Explosion, I mean, is there?
From, yeah, we.
Something that somebody could go out and look at?
When this explosion happened, our house shook like a tornado.
Okay, I don't know about explosions.
Explosion, we wouldn't use dynamite in the city, would we?
Or powder, whatever they use.
Yeah, they, they can use, um.
Okay, who, who should we? We, we need to.
I'll have to talk to the project engineers, and we'll get somebody out there to talk to them again.
Okay, we'll get somebody else to take a look at that.
We hope so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, because it's really terrible. I hate it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and we're still, we're using that city light for all these years and years, five or six, seven years, and they took their light down on Bone Street, right in front of 30.
Speak into the microphone.
Yeah, and they, they never got it back.
Okay, thank you.
And when we're gonna get it back?
I have no idea.
I don't know what, we had one person.
Unless, it's been noted.
And we had to pay the ambulance, and we don't want to pay another ambulance for somebody else's mistake.
He's done with his light business.
If you, if you'd like to speak, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Frederick Nichols, I'm the husband. Now, this light.
Please speak into the microphone.
The microphone, sorry.
The microphone?
Drop over here.
Can we help with the microphone?
This, this light, it, uh, it brought an awful controversy, because they said that this light has to be so many feet from one to the other. And so in between, they took this telephone pole, and, uh, it was real close to where I would back in at night. I'd have to back in, because in the morning, there'd be so much traffic. By the time I came out, and I, I stopped my car, there was beeping and beeping in the back of me, that I couldn't get ahead. So I had to back it in every night. So then, I, I was trying to figure out in between here, the, this, this light, I don't know why, what happened when the man went around the houses, and he says that, that, uh, this light. And he, he talked about it, and I talked about it, and, and I can't figure it out why they, the piece of paper they had, they was looking in there, and they couldn't find out where it ever said they moved that post. And that post was moved, because I was right there. They moved it about, about from here to that door, and they moved it back that way. And, uh, he said it never was moved. We were right there. Now, there's, there's a lie someplace, why this took place. Now, I wanna know what that is.
That I don't.
There has to be something that's causing this, why they didn't wanna know that in that piece of sheet of paper.
That I don't know. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Patricia Deener, I live at 1316 Broad. I come here this evening, I happen to talk with the gentleman from Habitat. He's the manager, and he's the supervisor. Sounds like they're not gonna start, not until next year. Um, but, uh, they said they have to go through some channels to check out information for, like, the building and everything that they need to do. But, um, I was, uh, the gentleman talked to me. And, uh, people are using it for private property. It don't work that way. They have to understand that Habitat owns the building. Bill that was here tonight does not own the building. And, um, they're using it, and viability is number one. It's trespassing. And, um, somebody made a comment, like, "How, how can you say that nobody can be on it?" Well, I have a card that Habitat gave me, and it's signed in the back of the card. And, uh, I just wanna let people know that if there's damages or vehicle going, cutting through to get on another property, it's not a good idea. And I wanna thank Speedway for the races Friday night, it was great. I usually like to try to go the fireworks, but God, they talked me going out, and I'll tell you, they put up finale on. It was so great, and it got, it was so nice to see that more people are coming out to the races with the kids and family atmosphere. And then I heard, um, this past week, by, I don't know if it's lieutenant, sergeant, or ship commander, I need to call him ship commander, um, there's something that they made this year now for sodas. I don't know if I'm saying it right, but I don't like the way it is. I know there's people that cause trouble down there, and they're not gonna stand for it. But, you know, you don't have to really broadcast that on the news station, you know, make us look like everybody's bad. There's a few people that are bad, that cause problems. But, you know, they need to refrain that. I know that they, they, they're gonna eject them out. I think that's great. That's the best thing people need to do, um, when things are going on. But, uh, just remember, everybody's not bad. Everybody don't make problems.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to?
My name's Sharon Kerner, I live at 709 Merritt. And I guess, I just wanted to say, I was, a little history of myself. I was an employee of a company in Oshkosh for 38 years, and I was a union bargaining person and, um, official for many years of that time. And, um, I guess what really annoyed me tonight, because, first, let me say, I was glad you passed a respect thing back and forth to the council and to the members as well, and other city people. I was offended by the man who wanted his resolution passed and mentioned Mexican workers.